It's six o'clock. We're going to have a big call of the meeting, the board, and welcome this to Call of Robust Spanish Core.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Mr. Winford Haynes, a great friend, is here to do our indication. And Kevin Duke here, he's our new District Three Commissioner. He's not unopposed. That's a blessing. He's going to do our pledge of allegiance.
Father, thank you for the blessings that you have given us. Or the blessing have come in Canada to have commissioners that you have placed on this board, your God. We just want to say thank you. Thank you for that. And Father, for every person that is here tonight, there's a reason. And Father, I pray for wisdom, everyone that speaks, every decision that's made, that will all be cured on your principles. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The ready approved the minutes of the January twenty-fifth, twenty-two meeting, appropriations, signatures, personal actions, pay though, and requisitions, and approve of general entries to be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve of item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Forward public comments and updates. Does anybody have any public comments and updates?
I think y'all wanted to say something in the public comments.
Do you want to say anything else?
Yep. Is it time to speak?
Yes, sir. Public comments, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay, per our rules and procedures, you'll have three minutes. And if you'll state your name.
Take the big stick and tap me in three minutes. My name is Ted Eaton. I'm a property owner of County Road Two Zero Four. I'm here on the matter of approval of the Point Sixteen subdivision plat. We were just officially informed this past week of the final plat and layout of this subdivision. And we learned that the permanent entrance was planned to enter from County Road Two Zero Four. And I'm here to voice our concerns, the property owners on Two Oh Four and the extension of Two Oh Four, which is Twenty-Eleven. And our complaints are, this road has a basic thirteen-foot wide roadbed within just two tenths of a mile of this stretch of road that leads up to the entrance to this proposed seventy-four lot subdivision. There are four blind curves. A couple of the curves are more than ninety degrees. We have two hills that you can't see over as you're approaching. And we have four major drain culverts underneath this road. All of this within two tenths of a mile that leads up to the entrance of this subdivision, the proposed entrance to the subdivision. And on top of that, the proposed entrance to the subdivision is in one of the blind curves. And we're here to complain about this and try to make the safety factor of County Road Two Zero Four was probably designed back in the seventies. The first subdivision that I've happened to live in was Greek Estates, which has ten waterfront lots. And subsequently, after we moved there, the end of this road was extended to the point to make Shelter Cove, which is twenty waterfront lots. So now we're on to thirty waterfront lots on a roadbed that is about thirteen feet wide, which we all know does not accommodate two-way traffic. And these culverts, some of them are bad repaired. The road's surface is crumbling on the sides of them from the construction traffic that's already on this road. And now we have a developer that wants to put seventy-four more lots onto this feeder road of Two Oh Four. And this road is totally unsafe and not adequate whatsoever to handle this kind of construction traffic for the next couple of years. And we understand that asking for this road to be repaired and brought up to date and passable can't be done while all this construction is going on. And how long will it take seventy-four lots to get developed? So when would we have any relief for this safety issue that we're trying to bring forward to the commission? The blind curves is blind hills. The traffic is horrendous right now with the development of twenty more lots out there. And now we're going to try to add seventy-four more lots on this poor little bitty road. And that's just not acceptable. And we're asking the commission to delay approval of this subdivision until a study can be made on this road and a discussion can be made with the developer to find an alternate entrance to this subdivision other than County Road Two Zero Four. That can be done and Two Zero Four can be brought up to date during the next year for construction. And then the permanent entrance could be off of Two Oh Four. But I can't imagine anybody wanting to bring anybody down to this County Road Two Oh Four and show them these fabulous five, eight acre lots. They're going to sell for multiple thousands of dollars down a thirteen-foot wide road that has four blind curves in it. And we just think it's totally unsafe. And we're here to voice and ask, is there anything the commission can do to deal with the developer of this to find an alternate entrance? Maybe a temporary easement across open property to County Road Two Zero Two for a construction entrance that would totally bypass Two Oh Four while the county is making adjustments to the County Road Two Oh Four to bring it up to date to handle the traffic that we already have, let alone adding seventy-four more lots. And that's all we're asking is, can there be an alternate pathway leading into this for construction trucks? We have trucks coming through there now. They can't get around these curves. Sometimes they're stalled down there for hours trying to back and forth, jockeying their trucks around. They're bringing in lawboat trailers with massive backhoes and trackhoes and earthmoving equipment. And it's just going to continue. That was just to build the road that they got in there right now to do the survey with, let alone when these seventy-four lots start getting cleared and developed and ready for construction of homes and lots.
Mr. Eaton, we're at our thirty-minute mark.
Well, goodbye. I think you got my point.
Thank you, sir.
We're doing this for safety reasons.
Thank you, sir.
Is anybody else here, has any complaints on County Road Two Oh Four? Brian, you want to give a little update on that?
Yes, sir. And again, very thankful to the president for coming in and speaking with us and bringing some of these issues to our attention. And again, as we spoke in the work session, there are several items that we will make improvements, we'll make to this roadway, especially replacing some of these culverts and trying to improve back some of the shrubber, the trees and the debris along the side of the road to help improve side distance along the curves. And as well, like I said, we've got that windpipe overtopping. We're going to try to do that this summer, along with some of the other roads. We're going to be working in that area. Two Oh One, it's One Seventy-Nine and One Ninety-Eight, One Ninety-Six, we're among those to be repaved. So while we're in that area this summer, we're going to try to make these improvements to this roadway because, again, you've already got the existing subdivision where construction is going on and then existing residents. So just after today's inspection of this roadway, I actually have a very serious need to improve the safety conditions of this roadway. And again, I appreciate that. Appreciate you guys bringing this to our attention. And if you have any further questions or any more comments on this, please feel free. If you have a card and a contact, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Is anyone else here with any public comments and updates?
I'd love to make one.
Yes, sir.
My name's Brian Nock, and I'm the commander of VFW here in Coleman. And I just want to say thank you for everything the county has done for us and helping veterans. Just along the last three weeks, we have saved four veteran lives. And the last two months along, we have spent well over three thousand dollars housing veterans, feeding veterans, and helping with repairs and stuff like that. So everything that we do, everybody here in this room and the board, thank y'all and appreciate it. Good night, y'all.
Thank you so much, Brian.
We've got a great VFW here. I'm also a member there. And Brian does a, I can't say enough about the job that he has done since he's been there. So we appreciate you, brother.
Anyone else have any public comments or updates? I have one here. If you're in Coleman County, if you have Coleman County water, we've got great news for everyone tonight. We'll be able to keep, be able to maintain good financial conditions and not raise water rates this year for all Coleman County water customers. This is even more of a consequence because of inflation has been so high. We appreciate the hard work of Randall Walter and his staff at the Coleman County Water Department. And everyone has worked together to keep water rates low for our citizens. And you know, our farmers and our businesses, it's very important that we're trying to keep these rates as low as possible. And keeping our water department in great financial shape. So that's good news. I'm so thankful that we've got that information.
And I think that's like the first time in the last twelve years or something that rates hadn't increased. So that's a positive thing.
Is the Coleman County water the same as East Coleman water?
No, not sure.
Okay.
You know, we got VA, we got VA, Dutton, and we got Coleman County and East Coleman water.
Although they wasn't that water.
This is a big plus for our citizens that's got Coleman County water. So we don't have any more public comments and updates. We'll move on to number five.
I had one quick thing. I wanted to mention, man, I had a death in the family of my wife. Dad died, and the commission stepped up and sent flowers. And I just wanted to thank everybody, the commission and everybody that was associated. I had thousands of emails and texts and just an outpouring to everybody. My wife wanted me to relay to y'all that she really appreciated that. And so I thank you so much for your concern and prayers.
Thank you, Gary. We'll move on to number five. You bid this A. This is an honor to recognize this lady right here, and it's an honor to work with her recognition. Peggy Smith receiving the David R. Eccles Distinguished Service Award.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have a certificate of recognition for Peggy Smith in recognition for being awarded the David R. Eccles Distinguished Service Award for exemplary service in economic development.
Speak. My speech is very short. Just thank you so much. This was truly an honor to receive the award. But honestly, it's been a partnership, as most of you know, between the county economic development office and the city economic development office for many years. And I'm just honored to be a small part of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you so much.
We might have to put you up on something.
Thank you, gentlemen. What you hate, you say. Ooh, I say. What you hate.
That will send me calling out about here. Yeah, people are gonna pay you. Make the motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Move on to B. Proclamation, teen dating violence awareness month, and talk about it.
Teen dating violence awareness month, talk about it. Whereas the month of February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. And whereas four thousand one hundred and five teens daily are victims of dating violence. And whereas ten percent of U.S. teens have been a victim of dating violence. And whereas the goal is to encourage teen and young adults to talk about things that are unhealthy in relationships and be able to understand where to go for help. And whereas creating a safe space for these conversations to take place so teens and young adults feel comfortable talking and understanding that nothing is hurt is their fault. Whereas the first step in eliminating teen dating violence is to educate teens. We must work to ensure that all teens and teen parents are aware of this problem, how to spot it, and how to help fix it. We must work together as a community to bring teen dating violence awareness to the public to be a solution against teen dating violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month of February two thousand twenty-two as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in Coleman County.
We got somebody here to receive.
Thank y'all so much for taking the time out to do that and to recognize that this is something that is important, and we certainly appreciate it.
Tell everybody what your name is.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. I'm Olivia White. I am the prevention educator with Victim Services. And I am actually the one who sent the email to get this started for this year. And I just, like I said, I appreciate everybody taking their time to do this, commissioners. And hopefully I'll be back in April for sexual assault fight.
And the key to all this is to get it, is to put it out there so people know.
That's what we're doing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. C. Proclamation nineteen, annual Sportsman's Lake Christmas lights display.
Whereas the Coleman County Commission has prominently displayed Christmas lights at Sportsman's Lake Park since two thousand three. And whereas the popularity of the Christmas lights display has grown in popularity each year. And whereas during the two thousand twenty-one Christmas season, twelve thousand six hundred and four vehicles passed through Sportsman's Lake Park to enjoy the Christmas lights display of almost a million lights. And whereas due to the vision and diligent leadership of Parks and Recreation Director Doug Davenport, scores of families were able to create timeless holiday memories at Sportsman's Lake Park while enjoying colorful Christmas lights, festive train rides, sleigh rides, hot cocoa, and visits with Santa Claus. And whereas the employees of Coleman County Parks and Recreation Department expended tireless efforts while transforming Sportsman's Lake Park into a magical winter wonderland. And whereas the Coleman County Commission on behalf of the citizens of Coleman County does issue this proclamation to recognize and congratulate the Coleman County Parks and Recreation Department for their successful Christmas lights display at Sportsman's Lake Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the fifteenth day of February of two thousand twenty-three.
I want to say, Doug, thank you for all you did at our parks. You know, we've got beautiful parks all across Coleman County. We want to thank you and your team for your dedication.
You couldn't get Randall to come out tonight.
He moved outside all day. He's a friend of mine. I want to thank y'all for recognizing, you know, it's a doing effort from everybody and all the gardeners that came up to this. Not only everybody from every park, but they did an awesome job. For this better twentieth year, I mean.
I'm gonna get my exercise.
Just watch your man.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep saying that. I'm gonna get that. Make the motion to approve item C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. D. Public hearing, consider vacating a portion of County Road Six Thirty, Coleman, Alabama. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to open.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have had a petition from two property owners that want to vacate a portion of County Road Six Thirty. But if you'll notice, the road ends right here. It was never completed. It's just land. The property owner would like to build a house, and it was going to come across this portion. As part of this as well, they, there's going to be a turnaround that's going to be added right here so that mailman, utility vehicles, and school buses, whatever, what have you, whoever needs to use the road will have that turnaround available as well. All of the budding and adjoining landowners have joined in on this petition. I haven't received any notice of anyone who is opposed to it. Have you received any? Okay. And the public hearing, the notice has been out on the bulletin board. Also, all of the utility providers and the surrounding landowners were notified of public hearing as well. How is this turnaround going to impact anyone along this road?
I have to give them the current conditions. It's actually going to improve or provide an improved service for the citizens and the services that use that roadway.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that you open the floor for any other citizens if they have any comments or wish to speak to this portion of County Road Six Thirty.
Do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of County Road Six Thirty? Can you step us to the.
Well, I don't have anything formal to say except I wanted to throw the primary petitionee. And I think that turnaround actually improves the situation for the residents. And as the primary landlord around it, it doesn't affect anyone else. So I appreciate the commission's consideration. It's Thomas Williams.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no opposition, I'd like to recommend to the commission that we close the public hearing. And if you're in favor of the vacation of this portion of the road, that you move to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. E. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, vacate a portion of County Road Six Thirty, Coleman, Alabama.
I make the motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. L. Authorize the chairman and county engineer, Brian Cheekwood, to sign blanket right-of-way deed for County Road Six Thirty, Coleman, Alabama.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item L.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. G. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, consider policy for inmate medical payment.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is something that was carried over from last month. It's a, we've had the discussion about a set rate to pay inmate medical payments at because inmates are considered an indigent population. The questions that were raised last month caused us to really go back and relook at what we had proposed. We had a meeting with Southern Health Partners where we discussed this. And the recommendation from that meeting was to base it on current procedural terminology code. So every bill we get has a procedure terminology code so that any procedure that's done is listed there. And we would be paying thirty percent of that procedural code. They said that this would be a preferable option than trying to go get a contract with every provider that we use is just to set the rate. And then if there's a discrepancy, if they won't accept that, then we might have to bring that back to the commission. But in most cases, they would accept that. It'll be a little more than Medicaid rate, or Medicaid rate around Medicare rate, to just word for it.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I appreciate that, John. I appreciate y'all adding that because that thirty percent of the current procedural terminology, I think that's going to have a big impact on how we're going to be charged. I appreciate that. Make the motion to approve item G.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. H. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, adoption of the United States Congressional District Official Map and Legal District by and through Act Number twenty twenty-one dash five five five.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, this particular map with regard to the congressional districts was put on hold. It was appealed to the higher court due to the closeness of the election, the Supreme Court ruled that it needed to go through as is. And so this has already been passed at the state level. This is just acknowledgement of it on the local level.
Thank you.
Does this allow them to set up precincts also? Is this resolution? I didn't, I looked at the resolution, but I didn't know about precinct.
This doesn't change any precincts. This has to be just.
All it does is put the lines in place. But the voting precincts will change because of the lines, right? Yeah, based, the voting precincts will be based on the lines.
Yes, yes.
So I didn't know if this, if they had to have this for those lines in order to go ahead and establish their.
It's already passed at the state level, so.
I'm sure they have.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item H.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. I. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, participant in joint bidding program for members investing in Alabama counties.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a joint bidding program just for the investing in Alabama counties members. It will work similarly to how the ACCA's joint bid process works. We just need a resolution to be able to participate in that person.
Make the motion to approve item I.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. J. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, designation of program director for projects funded with the county's American Rescue Plan Act, physical recovery funds.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this would just be a resolution stating that the program director would be the one responsible for the correct expenditure of the funds. And he would identify the contact person to work with the IAC and U.S. Treasury. Any funds would still have to be appropriated by the commission. Any projects would still have to be approved by the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item J.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. K. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty, authorize the Coleman County Economic Development to submit an application for funding assistance through Alabama Emergency Management Agency Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program for Bridge Replacement on County Road Nine Eighty-Six, County Road Twelve Seventy-Three, County Road Thirteen Fifty-Two, County Road Fourteen Twenty-Seven, County Road Fourteen Forty-Seven, and County Road Fifteen Oh Eight, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as the resolution's already stated, this is hazardous mitigation money. We did four of these roads last year. We're waiting on to see if we got that money. This is, we've been pre-approved to do it this year, so this resolution will give us the authorization with the commission's approval to put in and to apply again this year. And these six roads would total over, a little over a million dollars with estimates I've gotten from Brian, that would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split that we could pay for. And these are roads, again, that's been identified in our hazardous mitigation plan that will reduce flooding on those bridges.
Yeah, is this going to mitigate the repair of the road with just the bridges, Brian?
They will include some of the, well, actually, we'll raise some of the bridges up and improve some of the approach.
Drainage.
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve item K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. L. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, authorizing the commission to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the Indo Settlement and authorize the commission to sign all related paperwork.
I'll be happy to speak to you. It's part of the ongoing litigation, it's class action, dealing with the opioid epidemic that we have. The state of Alabama is not part of the class action, but there is some particular parts that have been carved out, and this being one of them. The commission will receive roughly a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There are certain stipulations attached to how that money can be spent. You know, it has to be, and there's different things that it can be used for, but most of it is dealing with handling the opioid crisis that we have in Coleman County. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item L.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. E. Amid item E from January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting to reflect ninety PTO horsepower instead of a ninety-five PTO Massey Ferguson tractors from state bid to no price change, model number fifty-seven eleven.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is simply an amendment to correct the type of tractor from a ninety-five PTO horsepower to a ninety PTO, just to clarify. And there's no price change. We also added the model number just for clarification for the minutes.
Make the motion to approve item M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, pass. N, amend item N from the January 25, 22 meeting to reflect the purchase of four Land Pride PTO rotary mowers from Sourcewell Co-op at $19,115.66 each, resulting in no charge to the total of $76,462.64 for the road department, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
This is a similar item to the prior item. Just clarifying for the minutes. The total is still the same as last month, $76,462.64, but that is for four of the Land Pride rotary cutters instead of two. So the individual price is corrected here.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item N.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. I will consider the purchase of one 2022 Ectonair Contenna Black Topper Asphalt Distributor, 2,000 gallons to be purchased from ACCA Joint Bid at $223,679, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request from the road departments. We're going to try to retain the property we have, but we just got these bids in as of this morning, so we'll change it. But this is just a purchase for them to upgrade some of their equipment.
Make a motion with approved item O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. P, consider the purchase of one 20-foot, 12-inch auger Ectonair chip spreader to the purchase from ACCA Joint Bid at $370,361.90, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, this is similar to the previous items. Just a purchase for a, new purchase for equipment for the road department. Hopefully, these will be here before June.
We need them for paving, say.
That's right. Appreciate the change.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item P.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Q, Consider approval of contract between the Coleman County Commission and Post Panda, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same group that we've used the last few years, and this is a little update on it. The reason we do that, because every entertainer that we get for a festival, we have to get them verified in W-9. And so this is made for Memorial Day, 4th of July, and the two days during the Sweet Potato Festival. He'll line up the entertainment, and we pick the bands from what he gives us within our price range. So it's the same dollar amount we spent last year.
Thank you so much, Doug.
Make a motion with approved item Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. R, Consider the purchase of a Lexia Reporting Management Computer in the amount of $3,694,300 American Vote Act funds.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is something that the Secretary of State's office sent to the probate office. There are federal funds available for these computers. The $3,694, we've already received the funds into the HAVA fund, and now we would issue a PO once it's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item R.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. A, S, Consider agreement with JMR Plus H for Architecture and Engineering Service for Courthouse Ventilation Projects, and authorize the chairman to sign or execute all documents.
This is a follow-up on last month's information from the ventilation project. This agreement, we've been discussing with JMR Plus H and the IAC has been involved. This would engage their services for architectural and engineering services to design, bid out, see through the project construction and everything for ventilation in the courthouse. There'd be certain benchmarks that they would give us estimates. Those estimates, then, we could, at any time, say we don't think that that's where we need to be. And then if the bid were out of line with those estimates, then we would only be billed based on the estimates if we decided not to proceed. So I don't foresee that getting into that situation, but we wanted to make sure there were safeguards. It's based on the standard rate, standard state fee schedule with a 12-basis-point discount. So it's a percentage of 7.5% after that discount. So they typically run around 9% for the full price.
Appreciate all the hard work, John. That's a lot, yeah, that's a lot to put together. Make a motion with approved item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. T, Consider authorizing Coleman County Attorney to file complaints against guests for violating campsite policies. Item N, approved October 19, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item T.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V, Consider the purchase of gate system for Smith Lake Park to be purchased from Gory Raven in the amount of $23,201.
And 90 cents.
That is, I was getting you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, they just want some T, B, whichever, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this is a gate system we've been trying to get for some years, and it just ensures the safety of the campers and helps stop some of the activity that goes on after hours from non-campers coming into the park.
I truly believe this will definitely cut down on criminal activity. Burks, they all some...
Yes, sir.
Criminal mischief.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be big for the park.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. W, Consider application to Coleman County Hazmat Team of $15,000 for purchase of equipment.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a conversation we've had with the Hazmat Team, which is multiple departments across the county. They serve the whole county. They want to buy a piece of equipment. They would like for us to provide $15,000, and they'll match that $15,000.
Make a motion with approved item W.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. X, Authorize the commission to appoint Gaither Mills for deputy corner.
Chairman, Commissioners, two of my deputy corners, their work schedules have changed where they're only able to help me on the weekends. In the upcoming months, I've got some training that I have to be out of town for a couple of days at a time. Mr. Mills has approached me several months ago, expressed interest in helping the corners office. I just asked that y'all approve Mr. Mills as a deputy corner. Currently, the pay rate is $20 a day, $25 a call-out, and by current law, it would come out of my salary.
Jeremy, we appreciate you for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate somebody stepping up to help. It's a tough job.
It sure is. So thank you.
And I know you ain't doing it for the money, for $20. So we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item X.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Y, Authorize the commission to reappoint Junior Hicks to the Regional Housing Authority Board for a five-year term to expire to the 27.
Is that me? Make a motion with approved item X. Excuse me, Y. Yeah, now I'm messing up, Doug.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I was still thankful that the guy stepped up and did his job. That's tough, man.
All in favor, say aye.
I apologize. Ah, yeah, sorry about that.
Any opposed, pass. Z, Authorize Commissioner Marchman to appoint Brian Monk to the Veterans Memorial Park Advisory Board to replace Wiley kitchens.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item C.
I'll second that motion, and thank you, Brian. That's another thing that, that's a lot of these committees that we appoint people to is they don't get recognition for what they do. It's a big...
I appreciate it.
And I want to say thank you for what you do for our veterans. You're amazing. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double A, Proposed plant Arrowhead Creek subdivision, a minor subdivision containing six lots located on County Road 515.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, per our staff's inspection and review of this plat, it does meet the current subdivision regulations. I do recommend approval of this preliminary plat.
And on these, on these plats too, Brian, what we're doing is approving the plat that they have submitted for their construction of that area.
Yes, sir. It's a proposal to construct.
Yeah, it's, we're not approving anything else other than just the plat that's been presented.
Yes, sir. It's the proof that they meet all of our regulations laid out in our subdivision regulations.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly. Yeah, make a motion with approved item Double A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. B V, Proposed plant Crooked Crane subdivision, a minor subdivision containing 16 lots located on County Road 936.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this subdivision preliminary plat does meet all of our current regulations, and I do recommend approval of this plat.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item B V.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. C C, Proposed plant Point 16 subdivision, a major subdivision containing 74 lots located off of County Road 204.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, this subdivision preliminary plat does meet our current regulations, and we will work to address all the concerns that the residents have expressed here today. And I do recommend approval of this preliminary plat. I would like to remind everyone also that there's still the final plat that will be signed.
That has to be, right.
When construction is completed.
Exactly. Make a motion with approved item Double C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. D D, Bid number 1374, award bid to Pepsi for the parks located at Smith Lake, Sportsman's Lake, Clarkson's Cover Bridge, Stony Loaks, and OHV Park and Coleman County Ag Center.
Yes, sir. We bid soft drinks out every three years, and it's our recommendation that we award the bid to Pepsi this year. And I forgot to tell, this year, if you don't know it, it's Smith Lake's 50th anniversary. So we're going to try to line up some things and make that special. We researched that. It's our 50th year anniversary. We're looking forward to that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with approved item D.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. E E, Bid number 1375, reject and rebid fireworks for 2022.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we only had one bid, and he had some missing documents in there, so we want to reject that and send it back up for a bid smaller but the same dollar amount.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Make a motion with approved, I mean, make a motion with approved item Double E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Number six, The next commission work session will be Tuesday, March 15, 2022, 4:00 p.m. in the commission meeting room. Number seven, The next commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 15, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the commission meeting room. Number eight, Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Meeting adjourned.